Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting.
You're over here. Turn that off. Yeah.
Sorry.
We'll try again?
Yes, sorry.
Excellent, that's all right. Good evening and welcome to the April 19th Select Board meeting in the town of Norfolk. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Blythe, would you talk us through this evening?
Sure. We're starting with a public hearing regarding the cable television license renewal proceedings with Comcast Cable Communications, followed by public comment. The action items tonight include renewal of, considering the renewal of that license with Comcast, then to execute the warrant for the May 10th, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, to consider the reappointment of Jim Wilson to the Conservation Commission, to consider amending the charge for the Fire Station Building Committee, to consider a recognition for six of Norfolk's newest Eagle Scouts, and then approval of road closure on Hemlock Lane on June 12th. Discussion items or Town Administrator updates. We have four sets of warrants to be approved, and there are no ones to be approved tonight.
Thank you. So we'll start out with a public hearing for the Norfolk cable. Kevin, you're going to be the mover and the shaker this evening?
Going to try to be. I'm getting it.
It's okay. Do we need to roll call?
Yes, tonight because of being one person being remote.
Oh, boy. I'm having a bit of a problem finding the notice, Blythe.
See, the move to close.
It's a one-page document that says legal notice at the top. Do you know how far into the packet it is?
Got it. All right, now I got it. There we go. The Select Board of the Town of Norfolk being the town's cable television license issuing authority hereby gives notice that on April 19th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Room 124, Norfolk, Mass., the Select Board will hold a public hearing concerning the cable television license renewal proposal of Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC. The meeting will also be conducted via Zoom online video conferencing remote access platform. Below, please find Zoom link information. The purpose of the proceeding is to accept public comment on, formally consider, and possibly act on the proposed renewal license, a copy of which is available for public inspection and copying from the town clerk or his or her municipal designee, and are available online at https://norfolk.ma.us. Public comment is invited. For further information and copies of the renewal records, contact Blythe Robinson, Town Hall Office, Town Administrator. Call the Town Administrator's office at 508-440-2855, or email brobinson@norfolk.ma.us. By order of the Select Board as Cable Television License Issuing Authority.
Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Norfolk's public hearing on the Comcast Cable License Renewal. I am Anita Mecklenburg, Vice Chair of the Select Board, which is the Cable License Issuing Authority under Mass. General Law, Chapter 166A. Notice that this hearing was posted in the local newspaper twice in two successive weeks. Copy of the legal advertisements are here entered into the record as Hearing Exhibits 1 and 2. By way of background for the public, state law requires that the holding of a public hearing prior to a final action on a proposed renewal license, which shall include opportunity for public comment on the proposed renewal license. This hearing follows a previous Board of Selectmen hearing and consultation with Norfolk Community Television, NCTV, on the Norfolk Cable needs. Based on information presented to the town and based on the recommendation of the Town Administrator, the Select Board may take its final action on and approve or deny the proposal, proposed renewal license before us this evening. Public comments, if any, as well as questions to Comcast should be directed through me, and I will rule whether they are in order. Please keep your comments no longer than three minutes before our hearing from the public. Let's first welcome and recognize Kathy Maloney of Comcast. She is present by remote access link, and then we will accept comments from the public, if any, followed by Select Board discussion of the proposed renewal and a possible motion regarding final action on the proposed renewal. And so we'll start with Kathy.
Good evening. Thank you for that welcome.
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, I'm trying to figure out the video part of this. Let's see if I can do it. There I am. Hi, everybody. Nice to meet you virtually, and thank you for allowing me to join you in this manner. I would just like to say, on behalf of Comcast, this has been quite a productive renewal process. I worked in concert with Blythe and with representatives of the community access entity, and we, I think, came to a very fruitful result here. We are keeping our operating support at 5% of gross annual revenues. We are increasing the capital commitment from a $50,000 PEG capital grant to a $76,000 one. And in addition, we'll be upgrading the channels, including an HD edition. So for my part, we're very satisfied with the result, and we hope that the town will be as well.
Thank you very much. Hey, did you want to come up?
Yes. Yeah, so, thank you so much. Blythe worked with Megan Corbett, our representative, since I was out for a few months, but it seems like it's a really good contract. We read through it, and the board talked about it as well, and we're really happy with it as well. Blythe and Megan did a really great job, you know, putting our interests first and making sure that it's a good contract for the town and for the access station as well.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything?
Sure. I would agree with everything that's been said. I would point out a couple other small things. First of all, it was important to us to try to maintain the level of support that, because that is the basic revenue that the NCTV depends on, is that 5% of cable revenue. So keeping that in place and Comcast's willingness to do that without even being asked was terrific, as well as, you remember from the ascertainment hearing, you know, what the needs are to keep up with the ever-changing technology, and working together, we got that to a good place. We will be able to have one of the channels upgraded to HD, which will improve the quality that people will receive. It will show up in a different channel number, so, you know, folks will have to learn where that number is in the lineup for Comcast from where it is today. But we also learned that almost 98% of residents in town already have an HD box, so there should be very minimal disruption, and people can switch out a box at no extra charge if they need to get to the higher one. One of the things that the town did step back on is, we do have a couple of accounts that, back in the day, cable companies provided free, basic cable to town buildings and departments. We still have a couple of those, but the FCC ruled a few years ago that that has to really come out of that 5% revenue, and so we decided it was just, it was a small amount, and it was more important to have that money go to NCTV for all that they do for us. So there will be some adjustments in the town budget for that. But having said that, one of the things that NCTV provided to us was legal support in this process, that they have an expert that does work for them, and they provide him at no cost to us to review the document and support us in that, because it's a very specialized field that most town councils don't work in, and I haven't done a license in about eight years. So having that available to us, free for us, was really appreciated very much. And kudos to Megan and Kathy and the board. I see Liz for all their help, because I'm not the technical expert, but I had people to rely on who could explain it to me and make sure we got there, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we should open it up for public comment now? So if there's anybody in the public who wants to comment?
This is Megan Corbett. I'm virtual.
Hi, Megan.
Hi, sorry. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight. One of my daughters is sick, but I was able to, I'm a Norfolk resident, and I actually was, I work in Norrid as well, but I was able to help out, you know, my hometown and Katie while she was out with her beautiful baby. But Blythe and the board were fantastic. This license is so great. Kathy was phenomenal, and it's really strong, and I'm really excited as a resident moving forward and for NCTV that they have this. So I really support it as, you know, someone who's in community media, but also a Norfolk resident.
Thank you, Megan. Come up to, Donna?
Donna Jones. I very much appreciate having these, the access to all the equipment and the services NCTV provides. It's been several decades, and I'd really hate to see it go away or degrade. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Is there any other comments, either online or, well, in person? Kevin, do you have any questions or comments?
No, it's incredibly reassuring to hear how well everybody worked together to get this across the finishing line. I'm not exactly thrilled that people will be able to see us in HD at these meetings that start circles and wrinkles about, but outside of that, fantastic. Thank you so much, everybody.
See, now, I didn't even think about that, Kevin, so now I'm filled with fear. But I have to say, one of the things that happened for us and our family is, when we went to HD, you go to a new section of the guide, right? You jump down to the guide, so you're in bigger or different numbers, and so then you never see the local option anymore, because you don't go ever back to that section of the guide. So I think by adding the HD will not only get you to see me in glorious living color, but we'll be able to see in the guide what our options are, which is not something I hate to admit to, but I don't automatically go through, but I would see it if it was there. So I think that's going to be a real benefit for us in Norfolk, so I think that's fabulous.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other? So I think you can move then, Kevin?
Absolutely. I move that the board vote to close the public hearing for the renewal of its cable television license with Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It seems like you're really great.
So you should second that?
I should second it second? And a roll call vote. Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
All, oh, we already did, we did the ayes and the ayes. Sorry.
You're good.
I'm fumbling forward here in the big chair. So for number two, is public comment, in general, open for public comments? Or is there anybody out there that has public comment not related to cable or related to whatever is pertinent to the town? Nobody, all right, we're going on to number three.
So number three is the actual vote on the license. The whole, the copy of the whole license is in your packet, all 63 pages, I think it is. And so I didn't include it in this section, but there is a slightly longer motion here that, again, is on the advice of councils, what's recommended to vote to approve this.
Kevin?
So Blythe, just to confirm, I'm starting with finding and reading all the way through the motion?
Correct.
Got it. Finding that the cable franchise renewal proposal of Comcast reasonably meets the franchise and cable-related renewal needs and interests of the public and town of Norfolk, and finding that Comcast's financial and technical qualifications and local programming channels, facilities, and services are reasonable to meet town cable franchise needs, and in accordance with the recommendation of the Town Administrator, in favor of approval of the Norfolk Comcast renewal license, I move that the Select Board, as issuing authority for the town, vote to accept and approve the renewal license agreement with Comcast effective May 1st, 2022, and execute the renewal license.
Second, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Awesome.
Thank you. We're all set. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, thank you. This is good for the town. Very exciting.
Thank you, everybody.
So number four?
Number four is the warrant for the Annual Town Meeting. So the final version is in your packet. The version actually has been slightly updated since we printed it last week, because the Advisory Committee met, and they have recommended approval of all of the articles except one of the zoning articles regarding front yard setbacks. They want to indefinitely postpone that, as well as the couple of articles at the beginning for capital that we don't usually do in the spring, anyway. So it's ready for the board to approve its execution, so it can be posted by the constable the next day or so, and then the actual detailed comments by advisory inserted, so it can go off to be printed and mailed to residents.
Excellent. May I ask about the setbacks question? Is that part of the recodification, or is that a separate article?
That's a separate article that was proposed. It was proposed last year by Planning Board, and they pulled it back. They came back again to recommend it, and Advisory decided they were not comfortable with it, and recommend postponement. I need to talk to the Planning Board and see whether they want to put a motion on the floor, you know, anyway, and get it passed, or whether we'll have that discussion, don't know yet.
Thank you. Kevin, do you have any questions?
Blythe, just to, yeah, sorry. Blythe, just to clarify, the Advisory Board's outcome of their review is to recommend indefinite postponement, not to actually IP it, right? The Planning Board still has the option to move forward with the article as approved in the warrant, and it'll still go before town meeting.
Absolutely. It's just that, because in Norfolk, the Advisory Committee puts the initial recommendation on the floor, they will put that on, that motion on the floor, and then Planning Board can come up and put their own motion on the floor and see if that's what people want to do. So I need to talk with the planner next week and see if that's what their intent is to go forward and have a motion ready for them. Yep.
Thank you. I have another question.
I don't have any other questions.
Good.
So with that, I move that the board execute the warrant for the 2022 Annual Town Meeting to be held on May 10th, 2022, at the King Philip Regional Middle School, beginning at 7:00 PM.
Second, and a roll call vote, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Excellent. Number five?
Number five is to reappoint Jim Wilson to the Conservation Commission. Mr. Wilson had sent in a resignation to step down from that when he knew there was a, I guess, an opening on the commission, excuse me, not on the commission, the Conservation Administrator, sorry, Conservation Agent. That position was filled in that meantime, and that person has started, and so Jim would like to be reappointed, get back on the commission.
Excellent. I don't have any questions. Kevin, do you?
Blythe, far be it for me to deter the dedicated service of an individual like Mr. Wilson, but in the time since his resignation and his interest in reappointment, have we received any other applications for interest in the Conservation Commission?
No, we have not, and I believe there's still an opening available.
Very good. Thank you.
So I don't have any further questions, other than to thank him for his service to the town.
With that, I move that the board vote to reappoint Mr. Wilson to the Conservation Commission.
Second, and a roll call vote, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
And we're on to number six. And number six is to consider amending the charge for the Fire Station Building Committee. CC added this on, and I think that the intention there was to add Todd on as a liaison?
As a liaison, or as a full member?
A full member to, because we're changing Town Administrators, as a full member who can represent the town throughout that process, I believe. Kevin, do you know more about that?
I don't know too much of the entire background, but I believe in our discussions, we had identified the need for some semblance of a transition plan, and I think this was a piece of that, to be able to ensure that, once we do get into the transition between Town Administrators, we do have some continuity within the confines of that committee. So I think this is just one of those preemptive motions, to be able to ensure that we have those in place.
It sounds like a good move.
You could, I mean, the way the charge is scripted, it refers to employees by their title, so you could amend it to add the Finance Director to the committee, and you'd have an eight-member committee until, you know, till there's, the interim Town Manager, Town Administrator is identified, and then that person can take over the role, and whether Todd stays in that role or doesn't is, you know, time will tell.
And in general, even numbers are discouraged?
Yes. Yeah. But I don't see it being a difficulty in a couple of month period.
There's not, it's not scripted here, Kevin. Do you want to try it? Well, do you want to discuss it further?
No, I didn't want to discuss further. I did just want to review what exactly we were going to be moving. So it sounds like from Blythe's recommendation that we should be moving to amend the charge for the Fire Station Building Committee to include an additional town employee and designate that as the Finance Director. Is that accurate?
Well, if you want the person to have the ability to vote on it, then I would say that. If you simply want to have, you know, have him and his role as Finance Director attend the meetings and participate in the goings-on, that doesn't require the change of the charge. It's a matter of, which I'm more than happy to do, it's just a matter of what you think, you guys think is best for the committee and the town.
And should, Kevin, I'm asking this, because I'm not, I'm wondering, should we have a time limit on it, because it does make an even-numbered board? Like, should we say for a period of six months, or for, what do you think? Just?
I would worry about doing that, given the uncertainty surrounding the filling of the Town Administrator role at this time. I think that, you know, from my, from my perspective, I think that we go with that motion that I just laid out, where we appoint the Finance Director to the committee as an eighth member, and, you know, as time goes on, we have the ability to amend the charge once again, once we have some more of these planning steps in place. Seems like the best way to cover all bases, from my perspective.
That sounds good to me.
So with that, I move to amend the charge for the Fire Station Building Committee to include an eighth member, a member of the Town Hall team in the Finance Director.
Second, a roll call vote, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Anita, Blythe, did that cover it? Or did I word that so goofily that we're never going to be able to have that defined direction?
We'll be fine.
Thank you. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Thank you, Kevin, for doing that. And we're moving on to our Eagle Scouts.
Yes, this is always an exciting thing to do. There are six new Eagle Scouts in Norfolk, and the Court of Honor is May 13th?
Yes. We got an invitation. Yes, we got an invitation.
Yep, so as they did a year or so ago, I don't recall exactly when we did this last, we have put together a proclamation for each one of them, which outlines some details about them, and kind of named a day for them, in the, in the sixth day after the 13th, in alphabetical order, and so asking for the board's approval of the, you know, of those proclamations in recognition of their, what they've achieved, and then hopefully one or more members of the board can go to that event on the 13th.
Awesome. Thank you. It's always nice to have an opportunity to recognize the young people of the town, and this is quite an accomplishment. It's not something that is handed to them. They really did the work to earn it, and we look forward to learning more about their projects. Kevin?
You know, one of the things that we did last time that I thought was nice was, in the context of this meeting, we had identified the projects for each of the six individuals who were attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Anita, since you have a printed book in front of you, is that something easy enough for you just to quickly cover before I make the motion?
Yes, I can, I can read them. So I'll start out with Alex's.
Thank you.
Alex's project, I'm just going to read the, I can, here we go. Alex, so I'm going to start out with Alexander's, no, it starts with Alex, but it's, Kevin on here. Well, I'm going to read them in the order they are in my book. So I'm going to start with Alex's Eagle Scout project was completing the front landscaping at Gilly's House. Gilly's House is a residential sober living facility located in Rantham for young men who have struggled with addiction and want to continue their recovery. When Gilly's House was repainted in 2020, they were forced to cut down the existing landscaping, because there was concern that digging out the plants before transplantation would disrupt the building's stone foundation. Therefore, Alex's Eagle project involved remulching the front flower beds and planting new bushes to increase the building's curb appeal. In addition, Alex also removed some old wooden lattice that was surrounding the front porch of the building. This old lattice was replaced with plastic lattice, which will be more durable and will not require any maintenance in the future. Since completing his Eagle Service project, Alex has continued his work with Gilly's House. In December, he delivered wreaths to help decorate the front of the building for the holidays. More recently, he and his brother donated a number of new or nearly new sweatshirts for the benefit of Gilly House residents. We thank Alex for his service. I'm going to go on to Chris. Christian's Eagle Scout project, yes?
Yes.
I'm going to keep going. Christian's Eagle Scout project was to build a picnic table and to install a trail sign on a post in Fails Park, Norfolk, Massachusetts. He needed to obtain approval from the Norfolk Historical Association and the Conservation Society in order to start his project. He researched different types of picnic tables, sourced working drawings, purchased the appropriate amount of wood, and marked and cut the wood. He also pre-drilled holes for fasteners, so the installation on site would be efficient and create less disruption to the grounds. Due to its being in a town park, Christian needed to use a certain kind of wood and minimize any impact to the surrounding land and nearby lake. He identified and marked off the flat ground for the picnic table, and a Conservation Society member came out to approve, for approval of the location, and only then was he able to start his project. On his project installation day at the park, he had two younger scouts, his brother, who is a scout, and two older scouts, to assist him. It took a lot of coordination and teamwork to bring the wood to the site and screw and hammer all the pieces together to create a level and secure picnic table. He also managed a group down the hill who were digging a hole and installing a trail sign and post at the park entrance. This was completed during COVID, so they wore masks and maintained social distancing. Christian has gone back to the park often to see that the picnic table has gotten plenty of use. It is in a scenic location overlooking the pond that families can sit at for years to come. He is very proud of his contribution to Fails Park and the town of Norfolk, and we thank him for his service there. Kevin O'Neil. Kevin's Eagle project was the installation of a flagpole and the building of a garden around the base of the flagpole at Gilly's House. Gilly's House is a residential program located in Rantham. I just read about that, so I'm going to skip down to here. Well, I guess there's no harm in, located in Rantham for young men who have struggled with addiction and want to continue with recovery. The flagpole is 25 feet tall with a 6x... The flagpole is 25 feet tall with a six-by-four-foot flag. Lots of research went into the size of the flag and the flagpole as well as the location. The flagpole was installed in the front yard. There's a light that shines up at the pole as well. The garden is a circular garden with granite cobblestone around the perimeter. Inside, there are flowers mulch in a walkway to raise and lower the flag. The flowers that were planted are purple in color, which is the color of recovery. Oh, that's a very nice touch. Gilly's House is a special beneficiary for our family. Kevin's older brother conducted his Eagle Scout project for Gilly's House. Our family continues to support Gilly's House through meals, food collection, and collection of needed items. Thank you, Kevin, for your service to our communities. And Peter. Peter's Eagle Scout project was to build a walkway over a muddy trail in Fails Park, Norfolk. The trails are used for hiking, but they were interrupted at some locations due to marshy land. The walkway enables hikers and bikers to easily travel through the park and enjoy the beautiful nature. Peter needed to obtain approval from both the Norfolk Historical Association and the Conservation Society before he could begin his project. He was told by the Conservation members that he could not clear out any leaves under the proposed walkway because there were tadpoles living there and they could not be disturbed. Peter researched different types of walkway and discovered a punchion, which is an effective way to cross bogs, shallow marshes, and wooded wetlands. The walking service is parallel to the direction of the trail and supports or sills rest directly on the grounds. He used two large sill logs and two layers of the heavy planks for extra rigidity. He started to notice, as he went around to the other parks, that the punchion-style bridge was used quite often. On Peter's installation day at the park, he had two Eagle Scouts, one older scout, and his two brothers to help carry the wood and set the wood in place, nail it in place, and ensure it was stable and secure. The hardest part was setting the sills during, getting them level without disturbing the land around him. This was completed during COVID, so they wore masks and maintained social distancing. Peter will continue to check on his walkway from time to time to ensure it remains stable and secure, which it has, and it pleases him to know that people use his punchion almost every day as they enjoy this wonderful hidden gem of a park. Thank you, Peter, for your contribution. And Sam. Sam's project was to construct, was to construct a tiered garden bed in the back of the Federated Church of Norfolk, which would be useful to them as they could use the extra planting space to grow flowers and other plants. It would also provide a nice decoration for the church. Sam started working on the project by planning out how the beds would be built and contacting people who could help him out. He made several sketches of the beds and made calculations to try and determine how many materials he would need. Sam also consulted with some of the members of the church and one of the, one of the materials donors regarding the design of the bed, which helped him to be able to build the beds more efficiently. When Sam and the others first began preparing the beds, they came upon two buried tree trunks, which were very difficult to remove. Sam had to negotiate with the beneficiary regarding how to best handle this. In the end, Sam's father and a couple of troop adults were able to remove them. Sam did not know exactly how much wood he would need to separate the two beds and he ended up having to make an extra trip to Home Depot to purchase some additional boards. Another issue coordinating the many different people trying to complete the project in a relatively short amount of time. The beds ended up being 25 feet long by four feet wide. The bottom bed was constructed with a stone wall made with pavers given to the project via donation and the top bed was built with a wooden wall. The two beds were filled with mulch donated from the DPW after the walls were completed. They were quickly filled with the help of several scouts. With the guidance and help of many people, the garden beds were very sturdy and will last for a long time. Thank you, Sam, for your project. And Sam, this is O2 Sams. The first Sam, that was Sam Tobarfolye and this is Sam Thomas Woodward. Sam's Eagle Scout project was the building of a new trail in the Campbelltown Forest with the guidance of the Norfolk Conservation Commission. Sam planned a one-third mile trail of new trail incorporating three bridges over wetlands and a three-step natural staircase, which was built into the hillside. The new trail connected to the existing trail loop and extended the distance of the hike, but also added the ability to enter at a second site on the opposite end of the forest. Sam fundraised for the outdoor lumber by making and selling sub sandwiches. He received approximately $750 for materials, personally worked 145 hours on the project and had the assistance of 11, 11 other youth and adults working more than 300 hours on the project. Coincidentally, it was a well-timed project. The approval for the project began prior to the pandemic, late fall of 2019. The work was accomplished at the beginning of the pandemic and additional access was available in spring of 2020. Very well timed. Since completion, there has been extraordinary foot traffic and appreciation expressed by the neighbors, many of whom work remotely and enjoyed the local trail access. Since that time, the forest has gained a following with dog walkers and birders for its convenient location and natural beauty.
And did we say Kevin? Yes, I did, Kevin. Okay, and that's it. Thank you to these young men for their contribution to our communities. Do you want to add anything, Kevin?
Not sure I can add much more on top of that, Anita. Thank you so much for reading those in their entirety. I know that it kind of elongated and taxing, but it does mean a lot to the community. Each of these projects mean something special to a certain segment, so the value that they add is immeasurable. So thank you to each of the gentlemen. I'm really sorry I missed out on the fundraising hoagies. You know, working at home, getting lunch is kind of hard to do. So next time that comes around, 25 Canterbury gentlemen, you know where to go.
Excellent. Thank you for the excellent suggestion, Kevin. I appreciate doing it and it was fun to read and learn about them. And do we need to?
So with that, I will.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I will move that the board execute proclamations for Kevin O'Neil, Alexander Stock, Sam Tobarfolye, Samuel Woodward, Christian Dedeces, Peter Dedeces in recognition of the obtaining of the rank of Eagle Scout.
Second, and a roll call vote, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
The last action item is to approve a road closure on Hemlock Lane on June 12th for four hours in the afternoon. They are wanting to have a block party, run it by both police and fire. No issues since they will be able to have access, if they need it, for any emergencies. So we recommend that you approve it.
It sounds fun.
Mm-hmm.
You're welcome, Kevin.
I heard the invite. I'm marking it down.
Twins across the street are graduating. My daughter's graduating.
Sounds great.
It's nice to be able to gather again.
It is.
I have no questions, Kevin?
No, none from my end. So with that, I would move that the board vote to approve a road closure on Hemlock Lane on June 12th from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Second, and a roll call vote, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Town Administrator updates.
Couple of updates. Check the state's online dashboard about COVID. We've had 28 new cases since the last meeting, which has our positivity, positivity rate up a bit, but overall 28. Of course, these days, if people are not going for PCR, those, there may be some that are not reported. So I just suggest everyone continue to be, practice whatever's right for your family and, and be safe. Couple of things. The chair and I had a meeting with Congressman Asha Claus's office a couple of weeks ago about possible infrastructure projects. They reached out to me last Friday and asked us to submit a formal online application for the City Mills Bridge and Dam Project, which was one of the three that we pitched a couple of weeks ago. So I did that for $10 million. I don't know how likely that is, but it was important to get that in and keep it hopefully moving forward. So that's something to keep our eye on in the future. Hats off to, it'll be a little bit of grandstanding here to Amanda and myself, who got the site map for the website off and to the company and approved. That's the next major step on the website.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
Path and our, my internal goal is to get this thing live by June 30th.
Awesome.
So we are, they need a couple of weeks. They've been building the site. They need a couple of weeks to take the site map and, and install that as well, if you will. Hoping to have training by mid to late May and then a couple of weeks of tweaking and, and so on so that we can go live with that. So that's coming along. Fire Station Building Committee is going to announce at town meeting that they're going to have their next community meeting at the library on May 18th. So anyone who's keeping up on when they'd like to come see the plans